Hi. We're going to go ahead and get started. My name is Melissa Mixer and I'm part of the Dedham Junior Women's Club and I'd like to welcome you all here to the first of our two candidate forums. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on the school committee. Tonight is co-hosted by the Dedham Junior Women's Club and Women in Democracy Dedham. We are both nonpartisan volunteer groups and we are very excited about providing this opportunity to voters to get to better know the candidates before in-person voting on April 10th and also giving the candidates a chance to let the community know about them. We are having two nights because there are so many candidates for the school committee. Just to give you a little bit of idea about the format, there were about 80 questions submitted from the public and those were submitted anonymously. About a week ago, a group of us from both organizations got together and we picked questions from that group of 80 for tonight. We were looking for the questions that were most representative of what was being asked by the community that were neutral and were going to be the most informative to voters. So we're trying to be as absolutely fair and transparent as possible. Again, tonight, we met with all of the candidates at 6:30 to draw names to determine the order that each question was going to be answered in. So it'll shuffle through the night so that everyone gets a chance to answer in each position. There are eight candidates for three school committee seats and we are pleased that we have seven of the eight candidates here with us tonight. Unfortunately, one candidate was not able to attend, but she does have a statement that will be read at the end during closing statements. Next Monday, please join us again for the other forum, which will cover the Board of Health, Library Trustees and Parks and Recreation Commission. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce the candidates in the order that they will answer the first question. And my apologies if I get the names wrong, I'm trying to remember how everyone's names are pronounced, so hopefully I get it right. First, we'll have Victor Abear, then Chris Palito, Lisa LaPrada, Kylan McCormick, Dawn Severs, Mike Emery and Kathleen Shortman. Tonight, we are going to be moderated by Dan Driscoll, the town moderator, and I'm going to hand it over now to him. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, Melissa. Good evening, everybody. Well, let's take a quick review of the format for this evening. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer all the questions. In other words, the same questions will be asked of each candidate. There are 90 seconds allotted for each response. Please respect that time limit. I will ask you to stop speaking if you go over that time out of fairness to all the candidates. And please remember when your turn comes up to answer the question to be sure that you are unmuted. We hope to create this evening a forum where there is a vibrant exchange of ideas. We want there to be respect for each other and for the different opinions that are most likely going to be expressed. With that in mind, we ask you to focus on the issues, refrain from statements that might cast aspersions on any candidate. In short, let's talk about the issues and not the person. Since each of you will be asked the same questions, please listen carefully as I read the question to the people answering before you. If however you would like me to repeat it, I would be happy to, just let me know. So with that in mind, Victor Abear drew the first spot and we're now moving to question number one. So Victor, you are up. The question is, "An individual school committee member acting on their own has no authority. Only the committee as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or experience will allow you to contribute to effective operations of the board as a whole?" Victor.
Thank you, Dan. First, I'd like to say thank you to the Dedham Junior Women's Club and Women in Democracy Dedham for allowing you this opportunity this evening. As to the question, it's really important that we remember that it is a committee and it does take, you know, a quorum to make things happen. You don't have to agree, but you have your opinion to express. I've been a part of many situations like this last summer just here in Dedham. I was on the reopening task force, which we were tasked with trying to find a way for kids to get back in school through the three models, the hybrid, the remote and the full in-person. And believe me when I tell you, there was a lot of deliberation within those meetings. And then after, I was invited to sit in on the DEA teacher's negotiation for the MOA for returning to school. And if the opening task force was an intense meeting and the exchange of ideas, then the union negotiations were 10 times that. On the committee, since I've been on the committee, we've had many instances where we did not agree with each other, but we managed to work through that sort of behind the scenes. We have conversations, we deliberate with one another, we don't try to convince, but we do want to hear each other's ideas. And I think that makes me a perfect candidate to continue to be on the committee.
Thank you, Victor. Chris Palito, number two.
Hi, Dan, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for having us here. Thank you to the Dedham Junior Women's Club and WIND for having this event every year. I think what I bring to the table as experience is my education. I'm a Southern University grad, I have a master's of science in taxation, I'm a local CPA, my knowledge of municipal finance is fairly in-depth based on the education and the experience of being a CPA. I think it brings to the table the ability to help ask the hard questions, which I have done in the past. I'm currently on a Southern University Advisory Board, which as part of that board is part of a curriculum for the new masters of accounting programs that they have to make sure that they're in compliance with the new CPA exams. From a financial perspective, I have served the last seven years on the Board of Assessors. Within that time period, we were able to create policy to review our own financial house. In that time, we were able to release overly surplus of over four and a half million dollars back to the town, which was used via free cash for direct tax relief. I'm a team player. Everybody has their own things that they're good at, mine is going to be financed and with policy, there are others that can be better with curriculum than I am. And I think that if you put everything together, they'll make a nice blend of that committee and that board. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Lisa LaPrada, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and also thank you to Dedham Junior Women's Club and WIND for hosting this event this evening. So what I think I bring to the board in terms of my skill set is, first of all, my six years of experience on the board and this past year serving as chair. Since I've been on the board, I've served on every subcommittee that we've had. I've worked collaboratively with other boards in town and also organizations in town such as Livable Dedham. In my professional career, I'm a scientist, I have a master's degree in biology from Harvard. That science degree has enabled me to have an analytical mind, quick at problem solving. I currently work as a project manager in a global life sciences company. I manage a global team, so I work with a lot of different diverse cultures and I think that also helps. Now, with all of those things, I think one of the most important things is that I'm a parent in the district. I've served on the board since my children were in elementary school. They will both be at the high school together next year. I also take the time to listen to people. I think carefully about what they're saying. I find myself to be caring and collaborative as well. So I think with these skills and my visionary way of thinking and thinking about next steps and going forward will make me an excellent candidate to stay on the board. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Kylan, it's your turn.
Hi, folks. Sure. Thanks so much, Dan, and thanks for hosting. Glad to be here. So I am a career educator. I have worked in the public schools for about 15 years and I have highly varied experience. I've worked as a classroom teacher, I have worked as a district level administrator and now as a school-based administrator. And those experiences allow me to have perspective on curriculum, collaboration with families and teachers and administrators, and I also have budgetary experience as it relates directly to schools. I also have experience in leadership in town. I'm one of the co-founders of the Anti-Racism Coalition of Dedham. We have spearheaded a number of initiatives in town and I'm really, really proud of that work and that collaboration that we've been able to do just over the last year or so. Additionally, I'm a parent, I have three young children, two in the Dedham Public Schools already, and my daughter is actually three today, so I will have a third going through the school system as well. So I'm really invested in the school system, I'm extremely passionate about this work and I'm excited about it too. So thank you.
Thank you, Kylan. Dawn Severs, welcome. It's your turn.
Thank you, and thank you all very much for hosting this forum tonight and allowing us to all speak. My job, I'm part of the executive leadership at my company. There's 12 of us in the leadership, 50% of them are women, and we oversee employees in five different offices in five different states and we have to adhere to varying employment laws in each state. So we've got several employees that we have to sort of manage and make sure that we are hearing their needs and adjusting to them, again, from state to state and with the varying laws. We have to make difficult decisions constantly with regards to what is best for our employees. One of the things that I value about myself, I am a great listener and I'm always willing to hear others out, I'll weigh varying opinions, but I'll still, I'll come to my own conclusions based on the data that I've received. And even if it means making a difficult decision, I'm not afraid to do that based on all of the input I've received. So that's my answer.
Thank you, Dawn. Mike Emery, welcome. It's your turn. You're muted, Mike. Mike, you're muted.
Somebody had to be the first one to do that and I just happened to volunteer. So Dan, I think the question was specifically about as a member of the team, how having more influence or is that...
Individual school committee member has no authority on their own, only when they work with the committee.
Correct. Well, so the last five years of my professional life, my job was working with executive teams around the globe, helping them institute new operating systems, new performance systems, and particularly around with some mergers and acquisitions. So I had a chance to be in boardrooms in Brazil, helping them make changes in Ireland, in Poland and in the US. And my job was to help that, those teams operate more effectively. And sometimes that meant giving feedback to people, making observations about how things happened and focusing on the process to help them figure out what are some ways that you can figure out ways to make good decisions as a group. And it was also an area where I was someone flying in from out of town or out of country without a lot of direct authority, and it was about how to have influence by listening to people and positioning yourself with some way that's going to help them be more productive. More recently, you know, as Chair of the Board of the Dedham School of Music, the only way that we got through our challenges over the pandemic was to really make sure we just got together and solve problems together as a group.
Thank you, Mike. And finally, Kathleen Shortman, you drew the last spot.
Right. Hi, thank you for having us. So I think that each individual on a committee brings their own expertise to the committee, but that it is also important to consider everybody else's background. So my background is as a Boston Public School educator, I'm retired, but I have a master's degree in communication disorders. And I think a lot of time on committees, there is a breakdown in communication and I think we need to be certain that everyone's voice is heard and that everyone's opinion is considered in order to work as an effective board. I have been a team leader, I have sat on other boards, I have experience trying to come to consensus or to respect other people's opinions. So I feel that that is why I could be an effective board member, because I would be able to see the communication in terms of which way it's going and when it might be going off kilter, not for the good of the group.
Thank you, Kathleen. We're going to move to question number two. Please define the terms diversity, equity and inclusion and explain your position on how these values will influence your work on the school committee. First this time is Chris Palito.
Hello again. So define DEI and how it should be involved within the school system? Is that the contents of the equation?
Yes.
I would define DEI as diversity, equity and inclusion. It's making sure that people aren't treated differently because of different, whether it's race, whether it's sexual orientation, sexual preference, how they identify or anything like that. Diversity is bringing, you know, is having everybody together within that melting pot and then inclusion is being everybody together. I had a colleague that described it to me as diversity is being invited to the school dance, but inclusion is actually is being actually asked to dance. I think that was a very profound quote that he had made. It doesn't belong in the Dedham Public School System, it belongs everywhere. That's part of our life. It's, I think that the fundamental core of DEI is treating everybody fairly, it's not treating anybody differently because of who they are, where they came from, whether it's a race or it's socioeconomic. It should be about inclusion, you shouldn't treat people that way because of a label, it should be inclusive. And that's not just specific to the Dedham Public School System, that should be around our town, that should be around our life. Everybody should treat everybody fairly and they shouldn't exclude somebody for different reasons because of a stereotype. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Lisa.
Sure, thanks, Dan. So I think, when I think about diversity, I think diversity is what everybody brings to the table. What is it, what is it about that person that makes them unique and what do they have to offer? And then when you think about inclusion, inclusion is making sure that everybody has the opportunity to come to that table and present and be their best selves. And when I think about equity, for me, it's really simple. Equity means everybody has what they need to be their most successful selves. So in terms of the school system, I think we need to embrace people for their backgrounds and the diverse opinions and perspectives that they bring, including all of our families and all of our students. We need to make sure that they feel inclusive, that they feel represented and that there are stories that speak to them every day in the classroom. And I believe that's very important to continue to do. And then in terms of equity, we really do need to provide our students with the things that they need to be most successful. And so when you look across the board, traditionally, people think about equity in terms of, you know, if you say, if you had a student in a wheelchair, then you would have a ramp for them to get into the building. I think we need to look at all areas of everything that all of our students need and think about equity across the board.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
Kylan McCormick, diversity, inclusion.
Yes, got it. This will probably be the quickest 90 minutes of my day. This DEI is embedded in everything that I do at my job all day, every day. So when we're thinking about diversity, we're thinking about all of the different things that folks bring to the table, whether it's racial diversity, cultural diversity, ethnic diversity. You know, there's a whole host of different areas when we're thinking about diversity. When we're thinking about equity, it differs from equality. So when we're thinking about, are we being equitable? Are we giving students what they need? And this doesn't necessarily mean that it is equal. When I speak frequently about equity within special education and we, without a doubt, provide equity to students who have special needs and it doesn't always look the same. When we're talking about equity, we need to think about equity across races, across ethnicities, across cultures and making sure that we are giving all students what they need regardless of their background. And then inclusion, inclusion means all. So how are we making sure that all students get what they need, get a free and appropriate public education in our building? What does this look like in our school system? Again, inclusion means all. Everyone gets what they need from the time they are three years old and until they graduate at 22.
Thank you, Kylan. Dawn Severs, your opportunity.
Thank you. So with regards to DEI, I feel that diversity and inclusion means valuing everyone because of their differences and not in spite of them. And equity, as people have said already, it means providing custom tools so that all the resources can be available to all students. You know, it's been a hot button topic over the last few months and, you know, I have heard chatter around town where people have equated DEI with a form of indoctrination. And I just want to make clear that the definition of indoctrination is the process of teaching a person or group to accept a set of beliefs uncritically. The DEI curriculum in the schools, their intent is actually the exact opposite of this. The objective is to teach our kids how to be critical thinkers, how to look at situations from varying viewpoints, weigh all the input that they get and then use critical thinking skills to come up with thoughtful and insightful conclusions. And sometimes it means stepping out of your own experience and into someone else's shoes to realize that there are other experiences beyond your own. I firmly believe that if my generation had had a course like the DEI course that we have now, there'd probably be a lot better conflict resolution and a lot less fighting on social media. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Emery.
Yes, well, I mean, diversity is celebrating our differences because diverse groups of people have more power. It's more of a fruit salad than a melting pot. Equity is just understanding those differences and removing obstacles so people can meet their potential. Inclusion is just for everybody, make sure that everybody's contributions are valued, everybody is there at the table. Now, the reason it's important is that there's just simple justice, but the other reason is important is if for us to be a great school system, if we get this right, and we will get this right, it improves performance in our schools. So we want to have a school system where you can walk into any classroom and every student is engaged, every student is engaged with each other, and that requires different teaching practices, it requires different processes, sometimes maybe a little different content. We're going to see leaders, be it principals and superintendents and other people in the administration practicing inclusive behaviors. And I had the good fortune to have, as an executive, to have a personal diversity, equity and inclusion coach, and it was one of the most powerful learning experiences of my life to have somebody follow me around for a week and really help me understand not just my biases, but how they manifested themselves. And we're going to get there and it's going to be successful in part because the world demands it. These are skills that kids need to become thriving adults and, gosh, that minute and a half goes super fast.
Exactly.
Hi, I'm glad you asked this. So in my 28 years I worked in Boston, one of the most diverse school systems in Massachusetts. I taught English to immigrants, I taught students of all races how to speak, I learned about the cultural differences from many races and religions. So diversity is something that we are given and we do have that here in our community. It's our responsibility to make sure that everyone is welcome regardless of their race or their religion or their background. And we cannot be trying to focus on one group more than the other. Equity is something that we will get when we finally bring students back to school so that there can be equity in education. Our lower income students, our special education students, our English language learners have not been getting equity in their education. So I'm happy that we will start getting more of a level playing field once the students come back to school and they will start having an equitable education. Inclusion is something that I have sat at endless meetings discussing what the best way to include a student with special needs into the regular education setting is. I've worked in all different types of inclusion models, including a school that was all inclusion, where all of the special ed children were in the least restrictive environment. Equity is also something that comes into terms with special education. I have sat at many meetings fighting for accommodations for our regular education students. So I feel that I have had a career based on DEI and I know what equity, diversity and inclusion should look like in education.
Thank you, Kathleen. I should tell the audience that for technical reasons, Kathleen cannot see the clock, so I told her I would be gentle with her when her time is up. So I hope that was gentle, Kathleen. Victor.
Thank you. I think my fellow candidates did a really great job of defining each of those three words, so I will come at it this way. As a parent, a parent of color of biracial children, I can't express how overjoyed we were when we moved to Dedham and walked into the Avery School and saw the beautiful diversity that was there. We had lived a couple of years in a place that lacked that diversity and it was, to say the least, challenging for my children and for my wife and I to talk them through that. So we landed here and they found a community and a place that they could be their full selves with no questions. So to me, it's extremely important that we continue to do this and we are working on that mission by bringing in Dr. Foxroy to help the district and not help the kids, but help the teachers and the administrators and the principals and parents. You know, one of the things I think we'd like to do is partnership, partner with parents to bring them into the process so that it doesn't just live and die in the schools, but moves out into the community as a whole. And we start to change minds that way, we start to bring people into the process. So that's what it means to me and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Could I move to our third question now, which shifts a little bit to looking at teachers? How should teacher performance be measured? How should the district balance using evaluations for accountability, but also using them to help teachers improve? Lisa, you're the first person up for this question? You're on mute, Lisa.
There you go. Thanks, thank you for that.
We should do an over/under on this. How many times do I have to say on mute? So if you want to play some side bits, now would be the time to do it.
Well, thank you. So currently, right now, what we have in the system is an educator evaluation forms that each year educators get to choose the goals that they have for themselves and they're teaching in their classroom. There's also, the administrative staff goes around and they get to watch the teachers give lessons and give them feedback on their lessons as well. So I believe in this forum, you do have accountability there because they are getting feedback. One of the things that the district has done the past few years is, instead of teaching being a solo event where you're just in your classroom teaching your students, I know the administration team has encouraged the teachers to not only go out within the district, so the elementary schools, to go to other elementary schools and observe other teachers teaching, they've also been encouraged to go to other districts and see how they might be using a new tool or something is being done. And I think that's really opened up a system for our educators to learn from each other. The accountability comes into place when they get the feedback from the people who are doing the observations. And so I think we're very lucky to have this system in Dedham. It's in all schools, but I'm glad I think it's working quite well here and I've seen, definitely seen improvements.
Thank you, Lisa.
Kylan. Sure, I feel fortunate to follow up Lisa because I want to build on what Lisa said. So I'm in a really unique position now in that I am a teacher who is evaluated on the system that Lisa just mentioned, and I also complete evaluations on colleagues, on teachers who are providing instruction in the classroom. And I agree that the system that we have in place in the state really allows teachers to self-select goals and objectives for themselves on which they want to be measured and those are typically tied into the school-level instructional goals that the school has as a whole, that the instructional leadership teams work on in schools. And I do think that this can be a really effective process for evaluating teachers. I know that there is talk amongst educators and elsewhere to use standardized testing for evaluations and I feel really fortunate that this is not something that we do and I agree that it isn't something that we should do. I think it's really, really important that we're able to target individual goals and measure progress in classrooms through observation and feedback and modifying our practice and modifying what we do based on that feedback and in accordance with the school community and the progress that the whole school and the community is trying to make together.
Thank you, Kylan. Dawn, your turn.
Thank you. So I am not a teacher, I am not an educator, and so this is all new territory for me, so bear with me. So it's my understanding, based on Lisa's comments, that the teachers do self-evaluations and they are periodically evaluated by the... and they are periodically evaluated by the administration. One of the things that we do for evaluations within my company is we have our employees do a self evaluation. But then we also have their peers do an evaluation of them so that we can compare notes. It's used as constructive criticism and then we set up some milestones. If there are benchmarks that they're not hitting, we set up some goals on how are they going to reach those benchmarks? And call me crazy, but would it not benefit to have some of the students maybe do an evaluation of the teachers? Some of the kids, especially, you know, teenage years, they may, you know, make a joke out of it. But you might get some real good response from some of the students. And you know, if you see a common theme, then again, you can set those milestones that a teacher can work towards in the upcoming years, and then you can go back over, over the years and review the past evaluations. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you Dawn. Mike Emery, your chance to weigh in on teacher performance.
All right, I guess we got a rhythm going here. Well, I've designed several performance management systems for organizations before. And the challenge is to have integrated expectations. You have evaluations and coachings. And I, and I know that we exist in an environment where you have state mandates, you have union agreements. But if we take things that we're trying to change, like for example, diversity, equity and inclusion, how do you change that system? I would start with principals and administration. And what you hold them accountable for is the behaviors that we know that drive success. The problem was, I think, Kyle, what you were referring to with using standardized testing is they're kind of after the fact. Right? So that's, if you take MCAS testing and other types of things there, there's not much you can do about those kids at that time. So you have to be able to give people data and feedback that helps them change in the moment and improve. So that's why you start with that, that level of leadership, which is the principal and the administration. And one of my questions to Mike Welch was, what are the inclusive behaviors in his development plan? The inclusive leadership behaviors. From there, then it's, it's, you know, it's feedback and evaluation again on those behaviors that we're trying to do that, that, that drive performance. And then coaching and we have, you know, the, the professional development days. But the great principals I've talked to, great principals I've seen, they're using their staff meetings, they're using observations. And you look at like sort of the dynamics in the classroom. So what teachers are doing and what impact that has in, in the energy and the engagement and things that happen in the classroom. Right on the second, I think.
I'll do close.
That's my mission for the night to nail it.
I'm going to move now to Kathleen. Kathleen Shortman. You're, you're muted Kathleen. Thank you.
So I think that teacher evaluations are very important. I think that all teachers have become used to them since they were student teachers. I am glad to hear that Denham is using a comprehensive system as we use in Boston that it makes you set your goals. It makes you think about how you can improve. And observations just keep you on your toes in terms of what you're doing professionally. I think it's also great that you collaborate with other teachers in Denham because you can also learn a lot from other professionals. And I'm also happy that standardized test scores are not tied into teacher evaluations. For those of us who have worked with severe special needs or special education students, it's not fair to tie teachers' evaluations into the progress that those students are making. Teacher evaluations are important and I don't see them going away. And it is something that needs to be constantly reviewed to make sure that it's being done in a fair way.
Thank you Kathleen. Victor. Teacher performances.
Thank you. Thank you Dan. As Don said, I, I am either an educator or an expert in education on that level. But I, the way that I think about this is that it, it, everything starts from the leadership. Right? So if you build it from our level down to the superintendent and the superintendent builds a team that can support and help grow the teachers and staff members of the schools, then the job will get done. Part of that is resourcing and budgeting to make sure that those teachers have everything they need to do their job to their fullest ability. They were hired in the first place for a reason. We believed in them then and we believed in believing them through the whole process. So it, as a school committee member, it's not my job to evaluate that teacher. It's my job to make sure that teacher has everything he or she needs to teach that whatever kid is in front of them to the best of their ability and to help bring them to excellence in their education and learning. Thank you.
Finally, Chris. Chris Palito.
Hello again. That's three. You're on mute tonight Dan, for those who are, who are counting up there. So I'm going to, big fan of the timer for the, can we get the timer at town meeting next time? Keep people on the clock. I'm going to buck the trend of what people have said so far in front of me. I don't think it's the responsibility of the school committee to actually be looking at that in depth of the teacher evaluations. The job of the school committee is a policy setting board. It's a budgetary board. It's not a day-to-day operations board. So to answer the question though, I'm going to almost replace the word teacher with administration. The job of the school committee is to effectively evaluate and hold the superintendent and the administration accountable for how, for how well the whole district as a whole is doing. Each teacher's evaluation should be used as part of the district's goals and the district's plan for, for excellence in education, making sure everybody is held accountable. So from a teacher evaluation and like the few said before me, I'm not an educator. I have sat on policy boards. I think that's not the role of the school committee. It's to hold the administration accountable for how our students are performing. So it's the administration's responsibility to make sure they're coming to the board to with their sound budgets, make sure they have the tools and the resources to be able to teach our students to the best of their ability. And the administration's job is to actually evaluate and hold the teachers accountable as part of the overall planning goal.
Thank you all for the first three questions. We're going to move to question number four now. This is a budgetary question. As a school committee member, you will have to make some budgetary decisions. How do you define your priorities when cuts are necessary, but there are requests for expansion are also being put before you? Question number four, and we're going to start with Kylie.
Sure. Thanks Dan. So I think when we're thinking about budgets, it first and foremost, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing student needs. And this is of course really challenging because not all students' needs are identical or the same. So we really need to make sure that, you know, that we're, we're collaborating and transparent with the community. And we, when we are making big decisions that cost a lot of money or might cost a lot of money, we, we need to make sure that we're being transparent with the community and having these conversations with, you know, abutters to schools, with, with community members, with stakeholders, with boards across town, with committees across town to ensure that we're collaborating and that we're really making the, the best decisions for our students. You know, as we all know, right now, there is this, you know, our big master plan that involves, that's going to involve a lot of decisions with the schools, what's going to happen with our elementary schools. And I think it's important, you know, if we're thinking about budgetary decisions related to that, that we're keeping the, the goals that were set forth at the onset of that master plan at the forefront of, of what we're doing. So we're thinking about these small community feel that we have at our schools. We're thinking about equity when we're building our, talking about building our new buildings. And, and again, we're, we're being transparent and collaborative and communicative with stakeholders.
Thank you. Thank you. Dawn Severs.
Thank you. Again, the, the budget is obviously going to be a major talking point over the next several months as we're rushing to get all the kids back into school. How do we do that safely? How do we keep the children safe? How do we keep the teachers safe? A lot of these are the same exact concerns that we're dealing with in, in my company right now. We've got employees working remotely. How do we bring them back in? What are going to be the expenditures for PPE? PPE is not going away. So, you know, we're going to have additional budgetary concerns that didn't exist a year ago. And in order to compensate for that, there may have to be some difficult decisions and some difficult, you know, cuts that have to be made along the way. We can't sacrifice our children or our teacher or faculty's health and safety. So that, that is definitely a number one priority. I am definitely trying to get myself up to speed because this is going to be the number one concern. Since I pull papers, I have attended every single school committee meeting and the budget has been the number one talking point. And I know it's being brought to the town meeting in the spring. And I don't have the answers of, of where are we going to make the cuts? I would personally try to stay away from music and art because I went through the music and arts in the Denham Public Schools. And I think it's very valuable, but some tough decisions are going to probably have to be made.
Thank you. Mike, your turn on the budget question. You're muted Mike. Mike?
I know, I was getting there. For the button. A little slow with the, they hear. All right. You gotta start the clock or there we go. Well, dealing with those issues requires that you're ready for them. So that means that you have an understanding and you've talked about, one, what are the things that make us, our school great and are going to continue to make our school great? What's based on our needs. So right, and the other is understanding in our budget, where are the things that you, that were out of the norm? Where are their variances? Because, you know, we're not, we're not never going to be that involved in the budget where we can identify specific savings on specific budgets. Right now, I think we can be happy that we pay more than almost any other school in the county on counseling services because that's going to be a critical need moving forward. Yeah, we spend a lot on per pupil, not so much on a sort of total load on the taxpayer. But setting up these standards and having those kinds of rules in place ahead of time can help you deal with those kinds of questions and those kinds of issues. And from there, it's, you start with protecting the absolutes. There are absolutes about safety. There's absolutes about access, you know, kids have to get to school. And then it's about taking your strategic objectives and how can you cut your budget without putting your strategic objectives at risk? And lastly, it's making sure that you're doing it in a way that's completely transparent and you set up some temporary systems and temporary ways to involve people across the community.
Thank you. Kathleen.
So I've been a longstanding town meeting member and I've reviewed many school budgets. I've heard many debates about what is necessary in the budget. I think here in Denham, we know that the budget is a very complicated process. It goes through a lot of people, a lot of people in town, not just school committee. Goes through finance and warrant committee, and then it goes through the town meeting. So there's a lot of safeguards built in. My concern this year is going to be that we need extra support and resources for time lost in learning. We're going to need extra programs set up for the students who have gaps in their education. We may need more summer school. We may need extra programs and that needs to be the priority. Fortunately, we have received extra COVID relief fund money, which we need to make sure is allocated to these specific needs that the government says we have to use them for. But I think that this year especially in looking at the budget, we need to make sure that everything is geared towards students' learning and students' mental health and wellbeing, which is different than years in the past.
Thank you Kathleen. Victor, it's your turn.
Thank you. Well, as a current member of the budget subcommittee and I self admittedly very new to the process, I've been extremely impressed with the thoroughness and thoughtfulness at which, by which the budget is put together. We all know that is the largest single line item in town and is picked over with a fine tooth comb. But the budget definitely addresses from, from a very thoughtful position, what we need now in schools, the important things that need to happen today. But at the same time, we look way out into the future for the things that are coming down the pipe. You know, like a new roof on the high school that may not be necessary now, but will be in four years. Or upgrades to the high school because we have to make that school last 30 years or more. And that's not an easy task and it's not an easy conversation to have. But we've started to have that conversation now to let everyone know what's happening. I believe the process is very transparent. We talk about it in open meetings, so everyone's there to hear it and updates are regular. We, I think the school committee has put together a great team of administrators who are very, very, very thoughtful in what they do budgetary wise. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris. Chris Palito.
So I'm a big fan of this question because of my experience as a CPA and the knowledge of municipal finance. I think with the budget, as Victor had said, the, the school budget is the single, single largest town, the single largest item in the entire town's budget. This year, based on the proposed buzzet, budget, it's going to be about a four and a half percent increase. That increase alone is not sustainable year over year over year. But it's also unrealistic to say that the budget is never going to go up or you could actually shrink that budget. Natural costs, cost of living increases, contracts, different things. So I think that the budget needs to be looked at more in depth and trying to not, not just to spend money to spend money or, or increase something to increase something. The idea is can we fit, can we spend responsibly? And looking in the future years, not just for capital projects to fix schools or this or that, but also if we can spread costs out for programming. The other massive, the other big part is can we reach across to other boards? The schools share fields with, with Park and Rec. Can we work with them to maybe share those costs and be able to spread that cost over two different departments and have the overall cost go down and ultimately have a tax savings to the, to the school department in the, the actual taxpayers? Like I said earlier, I've looked at the budget 100 times every year as an assessor. We went over it. I always advocated to look at our own financial house and we'd be able to do that internally. That's something I look forward to hopefully do as a member of the school committee.
Thank you Chris. And finally, on the budget question, Lisa.
Sure, great. I'm going to steal a couple of my seconds to readdress something on, on the educator evaluations. So where the educator evaluations does come to the school committee is at level three grievances. And since we've had the educator evaluations in place, we have seen a decline in the level three grievances coming to the school board. And that's holding the administration accountable for making sure that they are doing those evaluations correctly. Now I'll talk about the budget. So in terms of the budget, the schools and the, the schools are central to the community. And the, the schools are only as good as the community wants them to be and how much they want to invest in our schools. Denham has been very good to our schools. They've been very generous. And given the headwinds we are going to be facing through the pandemic, it's not time to walk away from our longstanding commitment to our schools. The way we address this is every year when we review the budgets, we get, you see a four and a half percent increase, we see an eight to 10% increase. We sit down, we look at those items that have been proposed in front of us. We look at the school committee goals, we look at the district goals and the 2020 vision plan, the five years out, and we align those with what we want to do. We also look what ebbs and flows in the system. For instance, there's 265 students in the eighth grade class this year. So we need to make staffing changes to help that going forward to next year. So we're very carefully looking at the budget and that's how we go about setting priorities.
Thank you Lisa. We're going to move now to our fifth question. In addition to the goals you've already mentioned, what are the top two or three things that Denham needs to address concerning its schools? And why do you see these needs as particularly important? And please be specific. Dawn, you are first.
Thank you. So my platform in running for school committee has been to, I'm committed to making sure that our children feel safe, respected, valued and heard. So with regards to safety, first and foremost, we're talking about their health, safety. You know, with what is, what is the world going to look like post COVID, post pandemic? You know, we weren't, we were grossly unprepared for this global pandemic a year ago. So we have to now be forward thinking and how do we anticipate the challenges of this post pandemic world? What is the next health crisis going to be? You know, PPE is here to say what we're going to need additional health measures that we're going to have to have the foresight to sort of predict. Number two, I think are the mental health of not just the students, but our teachers has to really be addressed. You know, our students, you know, some of our older students have missed important milestones like going to the prom. Our youngest students don't understand why they can't be with their friends anymore. That's going to take a toll over, over time. And we've, we've got to pay attention to that as well as the stressed out teachers who have been trying to teach children in front of them and, and on a computer. And lastly, I think we need to protect the safety of our children from bullying, harassment, discrimination, microaggressions. You know, I think we really have to look out for their safety and that's number one right now.
Thank you. Mike, going to ask you to address this question now, please. Mike, I'm going to ask you to address this question now, please.
She's the second time I've done that. Is there a prize? All right, what, so the, the first one is the, is the social emotional needs of students, particularly as they return to, to school. I mean, these, this creates the conditions that they can start to recover academically. And even before COVID, I mean, there was increasing across the country incidences and reports of anxiety and loneliness among children. So it was already a problem. And the isolation is only raises it more. And as people pointed out, it's not equal across the board. So I'm certain that we can address this as a community, not just as a school system. I know us in the Dedham School of Music are reaching out to partners across town to figure out what kind of programming we can run. You know, I've talked to parents, the parents of special ed students who are really worried about the summer and using it as a chance for them to reconnect. I also, secondly, I think I worry about getting diversity, equity and inclusion rights for the schools. I'm passionate about it because it's going to increase performance for everybody. It's critical to making us a great school. And this initiative has been in place for four years and we're not at a place yet where we have that vision that people can get around. I mean, it's no surprise that, you know, Fortune, the one thousand companies have spent eighteen to thirty billion dollars last year on diversity, equity, inclusion, because they know that it makes it better and it prepares students for the, for the, for the future that they're going to be facing. And, you know, lastly, just making sure that we're planning for the future and we talked about some budget issues and getting those in place down to the second.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Kathleen?
Yes, so my two goals, the first one would be just getting students, all students back into school full-time with all of the supports and resources that we're going to need. This is going to be a huge goal that we can start this spring, but then we're going to have to pick up in the fall and look and see how everything is then. We're still going to need programs to help for all of the learning gaps that have occurred. Children are going to need help with school refusal and school anxiety. So I feel like for the next year, it's about making schools a safe haven where children feel comfortable and are given what they need and they're brought up to grade level with teachers focusing on the skills that they need to learn in order to go on to the next grade. Sticking to curriculum and making sure that everyone has achieved what should be achieved by the end of the grade. However, looking ahead, after we have our year or so of adjustment, I feel that Dedham needs to push for more academic excellence. If you look at the DESI report card on Dedham, we're not yet meeting our targets. We're making progress. We're, we're average. We should be better. We have a low student teacher ratio. We have high per pupil spending. And we have very involved parents. And I think that we need to push more for academic excellence when the time is right. But we need to first just let our students recover and then I feel like we could become better than we are.
Thank you. Victor?
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. First, I'd like to go back to the budget question and make one more comment. I sat in on the FinCom meeting, obviously, last week. And I was very impressed when two longstanding members of that board commended Superintendent Welch and Sam, Assistant Superintendent Sam Ripken on the thoroughness and thoughtfulness of the school committee budget, the school budget every year. They essentially said, it's a pleasure to look at. There's no wasted dollar. And, you know, when there's cuts to be made, they're extremely hard. As for the, what's, what's most important to me, I think the most important thing to me right now is communication. It's the thing that I think we are really have dropped the ball on. From the committee to the community. It's something that I, I want to work on. It's, I'm actually on the budget, I mean, the Communication Subcommittee. But we've had such a a crisis ridden year that I feel like we've let that slip by the wayside, which was not fair to our kids and our community and our schools. So if I'm elected to stay on the committee, it's one, my, my number one thing. The next is obviously the mental and emotional health of our kids. And we have to keep resourcing the DEI mission and initiative throughout the district and town.
Thank you, sir. Chris, Chris Polito.
Thank you, Dan. I think it's a great question. I want to start with one of the goals. I think the first and foremost goal has to reopen our schools. I know they're in the process of reopening right now. And I think by maybe end of April, he hasn't corrected me if I'm wrong on that, that we could have a full district wide opening. It's not just about reopening the schools. It's also about reopening the schools safely and to keep them open. If this ever happens again. So I think the plan is, cannot be just for the next three months, six months, next school year. It needs to be a long-term plan that if this happens again, we can easily shift to a remote learning. As part of that reopening of the schools is also reintroduction of, of the kids to the school. There's going to be a lot of mental health issues with, with socialists, especially with some of the young, with our younger students. They've never been in school before. They don't know what it's like. And some of our oldest, some of our older students missing so many different, you know, milestones within their life. I think the second goal I would have would be to hold the accountable, to hold the accountable, the administration accountable for their actions. I'm not saying the administration's done anything bad. I'm not saying they've done anything good. But they need to be held accountable for what they're doing. Part of that is transparency and communication to the, the students and to their families. And over there, it just said that he's on that Subcommittee, but that needs to take priority. One of the things I've heard a lot about over the last few weeks is they don't know what's happening in the schools. They don't know what the plans are early. It's last minute and I think that's something that we need to work on as a PR issue that our esteemed Kevin Kaufman ran on a couple of years ago. Just made it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Lisa?
Great, thanks, Dan. So the two things I would like to focus on is one, emerging from the pandemic and what does school look like when we have all of the students back? And then the next one is a little bit of a focus on the diversity, equity and inclusion again. So in terms of emerging for the pandemic, you know, we are just getting back to school right now. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the governor are making decisions and putting them on our plate very last minute and we're supposed to respond quickly to do that. We don't even know what school will look like next fall. Just because you're vaccinated doesn't mean that you still might not get COVID-19. Vaccinations for childrens are now currently in trials with the Moderna vaccine. So I think with my experience with working with the Health Department every week on calls this past year and thinking about how do we make school safe for our students, but also take into account the anxiety that our teachers and our staff are feeling. I think it's very important to continue to think that way and think how we get all the students back. In terms of diversity, equity and inclusion, I think Victor's absolutely right. We could have, the communication there could have been better. I think going forward, we have to have metrics in place of how we're going to be assessing the diversity, equity and inclusion position. We can also from policies look there. A number of other districts have, have an education equity policy. And we should definitely be looking into that in Dedham as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kyla, your turn.
Sure, thank you. So I think, you know, here we are at the, still a year later within the midst of a, of a global pandemic. And, you know, as, as folks have mentioned, we are being mandated to return to school. Everyone should be back by the end of April. So I think, you know, as a member of the school committee, what, what are, when we're, if, when we're looking at policies and goals, we need to be supporting students in their academic loss and the gaps that, that have undoubtedly occurred. I see it with my own children. I see it with students in my school. We need to be thinking about how we can support teachers to figure out where, teachers and parents to figure out where students are and how we can make up for, for the time that has been lost by students in hybrid and remote learning. Secondly, we really need to be making sure that our students are socially and emotionally well. And that we are highlighting and emphasizing this as an importance. If students are not in a social emotional place to learn, then they won't be learning and they won't be making those academic gains. You know, as of right now, we have one director of counseling in our district and she is tasked with many, many jobs. And, and, you know, I think it's something that we need to consider, especially now, thinking about how do we fund additional support for the counseling department. Additionally, diversity, equity and inclusion, that again needs to start at age three. We need to be supporting policies that allow all of our students, all of our families to feel welcome and at home and, and safe and, you know, wanted in our school buildings.
Thank you. Okay. You've all been very on point and concise with your answers, so we do have time for one more question. Let me just point out that there are currently a hundred and eighty-one residents watching on Zoom plus an untold number that are watching on Dedham Cable TV. So you are reaching a good audience. So the sixth question is probably very relevant for this time. A two thousand and eighteen study by Stanford University showed that eighty-two percent of middle school students couldn't tell the difference between real news stories and paid sponsored articles. What can we be doing in our schools to help educate students to be responsible consumers of the news and media? And we're going to start with Mike Emery first on this question. You're muted, Mike?
Yeah, I know, I know. So I, I was just looking at this afternoon. So these are the state guidelines, pre-K through twelve. Evaluate credibility, accuracy and relevance of each source. These are goals. Argue or explain conclusions with valid reasoning. Analyze the purpose point of view of each source. So these are some of the fundamental challenges that we face and in order to prepare our students that today, to be effective citizens tomorrow, to solve problems better than we can, those are fundamental. So, I mean, part, part of what we do here is, is really looking at the process and things that happen in the classroom. And I could tie it to diversity, equity and inclusion. People get concerned about people coming in with an agenda in the classroom or things that they're trying to teach people. I think we all agree, we want them to discover what they, what they think of things, how they interpret their world based on their experiences. And that's, that's our challenge to have a process and effective teaching that say, ask, helps them ask questions, help them differentiate between facts and opinion. And then go through a process of putting those together to make their viewpoint and get challenged in those viewpoints. And that's just the type of thing that starts to happen at middle school. Did I lose the timer there or did I go?
No, I don't think you did it. I'm just, well, I was going to text one of our coordinators here, but
That mean I can go on for like ten minutes or?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm running the timer and it appears as though the, there's a time limit on how long we can be using this app. We have just hit that limit. So if it's okay with all the candidates, I can just continue to time using a more old fashioned timer. And I will just pop in and say, I'll, I'll make a quick sign really quick that says thirty seconds and one that says time. And I'll just turn my video on and do that as a substitute. Are, are the candidates okay with that?
Yeah, I, I'll just, if I just finish up by saying really defines what good teaching needs to be in order to achieve these, these objectives and how they facilitate those lessons in the classroom, how they make people feel included, how they respond.
Thank you, Mike. Kathleen? You're muted, Kathleen. Kathleen, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I also asked if you could just review the question. A lot went on in between there.
Yeah, it was a long question. A two thousand and eighteen study by Stanford University found that eighty-two percent of middle school students couldn't tell the difference between real news stories and paid sponsored articles. What can we be doing in the schools to help educate students to be responsible consumers of news and the media?
Right, okay. I like this question. I'm a language specialist. And part of my reason for being excited about children getting back in school is they have been on screens. They have been on screens so much that they're starting to have trouble knowing the difference between the real world and knowing the difference between what they read on social media. So number one, I would say we get our children back to school with books in their hands and having face-to-face conversations that will really start to help. However, the other issue goes to our curriculum. And this is a skill that is learned beginning in elementary school about fact, fiction, reality. And they need to make sure that all of those skills are being taught in the English Language Arts curriculum in the elementary school, so that when we get up to middle school, those skills are there for them to be able to tell the difference. And then it goes to my other favorite topic, which is actually using conventional language and writing and having a lot of written language work, which is also something that has been missing during this pandemic and screen time. So I feel like this would be a really great thing to start addressing next year when everyone is back in school. Old school style by just having children read from multiple sources, have classroom discussions and have very varied writing assignments. So I guess my answer on being a teacher instead of a school committee meeting would, remember, would be to review the curriculum and make sure that all of the necessary component parts are being taught at each grade level.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. Victor?
Thank you, Dan. I saw that study too, and I thought it was pretty amazing. It broke down where kids get their news from. And the vast majority of that was from the home. And we already know that we, as an adult population in this country, have a really poor track record of knowing what's true and what's false online. So it's an uphill battle, obviously, to teach our kids to do better than us. I do know that part of the curriculum in our schools in middle school is to rethink and it's been reimagined how you teach history and how you teach civics and how you teach all of these current topics that they try to look at each one through different lenses. Let's look at it through the lens of a historian. Let's look at it through the lens of an economist. Let's look at it through these different lenses, so the kid can build a full idea and then, and a full perspective of what that topic is about, right? And that is true knowledge. That leads them directly to making a informed decision about what is true and what's not. I also can tell you that my, through my fourth grader came home and told me about her opinion piece. My first grader came home and told me that they were learning what opinion pieces were. So the work is being done already. And these things take time. Evolution is slow, but we're already on the path.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. Chris?
Uh, thank you, Dan. I, it's a very, it's a very interesting question. It's so relevant in our, in our world today. Not just within politics, within social media or in the news organizations. Again, I, I'm going to come back to, that's, this question is not specific to the, the school committee, against a policy setting board. I think that does break down to the administration accountability part of this. But I think it's also teaching our, our students to, to not just go with one news source, to with one person, what one person says is to read what one person says and then go check it somewhere else. A lot of what I do with, within, within tax and tax law is if I want, if I want something, I go find it. I can use the internet to go look at it. And if it's not, if I find it in one place, you can't take that as fact because that's somebody's opinion. You don't know if it's real or not real. You have to go to multiple sources. You have to teach our kids on how to think critically outside of the, outside of that spectrum. You have to show them both sides. I think that's part of the educator's job is to teach one, to teach something and have both sides of it. This past fall, I was lucky enough to be an adjunct accounting professor at Nichols College in a, in a tax class. And it was very fun during the, the Biden-Trump election. And we'd always have these conversations. And if one person said, you know, was very pro-Biden, I'd go pro-Trump. And if the other person was pro-Trump, I'd go pro-Biden. And it got asked to me, a question was, what is my opinion? What, what do I believe? And I explained to him, my opinion doesn't make a difference. My opinion is checked at the door. That's not the educator's role, is to make them think from multiple different times. I do see your sign, Molly, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Lisa?
Great, so thank you. So I think this is a fantastic question. And I do, I agree with Chris, you know, as a, as a school committee member, there's, you know, it's really up to the administration to do this. But as a parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler and watching them do researched papers and thinking about, I go back to my education, a primary source, a secondary source, a tertiary source. And I don't hear a lot about that these days and kids do start on the internet. So I think it's really important to cover current events and to look into current events and news stories. I also think that we need to teach students how to identify and research their sources. And then they need to be able to ask questions. So what are the biases of the author? Who are, who's writing the article? Where, where did the article come from? I also think it's important to research the same topic from multiple sources. And I think that will help to give our students a lens into different perspectives and what people are writing. And to think about, you know, is this a sol, is this a solid source or, or not? So, thanks.
Kyla, your opportunity?
Sure, thanks. So at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I just want to echo.
Sure, thanks. So at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I just want to echo that, you know, as a, as a school committee, we're not in charge of curriculum. We are, you know, working on setting policies and goals for our schools. And I think, but I do think that this is applicable, this question can be applicable when we're thinking about as adults in positions in our community, how are we modeling? How are we setting an example for our students? And for other adults even in the community, how are we, you know, sharing information and making sure that our goals and our policies and our objectives of the community are being communicated to the community and to, you know, and to focus in our schools and again, in our greater community and in communities who are surrounding us. You know, what does Dedham look like to the rest of the world? How are we sharing the greatness that, you know, that happens here? And how are we showing this to our students and in our school? Yeah.
Thank you. And Dawn Severs.
Thank you. I'm going to quote one of the members of our select board from last Thursday's March eighteenth Select Board meeting. Get off Facebook, talk to one another in person and be kind to one another. And that was the first thing that I heard when the question was read was just get off social media. Kathleen pointed out, there's been way too much screen time and it's not just for our kids this past year, but all of our, the adults and all the community members too. It's way too much time in front of a screen. And I really, I believe that social media platforms should not be anyone's primary source of news. You know, over the weekend, we purchased a VR gaming system and virtual reality, it's incredible how much it looks like the real world, but it's not real. We want to make sure that we're teaching our kids critical thinking, teach them how to ask questions, teach them how to challenge what they're told, encourage healthy debate. You know, debate prep, teaching our kids how to write opposition statements, how to defend the opposite side. And I think that DEI is perfectly aligned with this because we're telling our kids to listen to varying viewpoints, understand where others are coming from. And even though you might still disagree with them, in the end, you'll walk away with respect for one another. Thank you.
Well, you've all done a great job being on the hotspot and giving these incredibly complicated questions in ninety seconds to try to sound sound conversant on them. So my hats off to all of you. We're going to move now to the final statements. These are two minutes statements that you're, that you're allowed. And I've been asked to read the statement from Rebecca Gates, who was not able to be with us tonight. And after I do that, the order will be, we're keeping in the same system of rotating who speaks first. So Kathleen will be first when it comes to do the final statement, followed by Victor, Chris, Lisa, Kylan, Dawn, and finally, Mike. Rebecca Gates, candidate for school committee. Thank you to Wind and the Junior Women's Club for hosting the forum. My name is Rebecca Gates, candidate for Denham School Committee. Denham deserves a school committee that represents a variety of business experiences, educational background, and family dynamics to oversee and manage our multimillion dollar school budget and the education of each student in our district. There is a misconception that educators and teachers make the best members of the school committee. While I appreciate this opinion, Denham currently has three members who bring this perspective to the committee. To be a truly effective school committee, we need a balanced board that holds the district accountable, ensure student achievement, and is fiscally responsible. I was raised in East Denham, with some of my best memories are from the Avery School and Denham High School. My husband Rich and I are raising our family in the manor. As a student myself, attending UMass Boston and a mom of three sons, two of whom are recent graduates of Denham High School and a current fourth grader at the Green Lodge School, this affords me an unparalleled perspective of our schools from the early days at the ECEC through the final years at Tenham High School. I will use my knowledge and leadership experience gained as a manager for a global business and as CEO of a theater company to prioritize academic success for all students, as well as my ability to listen, work with differing opinions, and always striving for the best solution to advance a shared goal and vision. My top priorities are opening our schools and getting in classroom instruction and support, operating safely and successfully, building an inspiring and extraordinary school community for all students and families, spending resources responsibly and creatively, whereas respecting our tax base. I have, I know a committee with vast backgrounds and viewpoints with mutual spread will bring out the best for the town of Denham. I apologize for not being able to join you this evening. Please feel free to contact me at electrebecca gates@gmail.com. Thank you. I edited a couple of those sentences because I saw we were running out of time, so apologies to Rebecca. Okay, Kathleen.
Okay, great. Thank you. So a lot of people have asked me why I've decided to do this as a retired teacher. And my answer would be because I was so very upset about the loss that children have suffered during this pandemic, loss of education, loss of social skills, loss of their friends. And it's a very difficult time. And I felt the responsibility to try and come in and help as much as I could, given my background. I still hold a Massachusetts education license as an academic specialist teacher. I have a state license as a speech language pathologist. And as I said before, I had twenty-eight years working in the Boston Public Schools and I still do work per diem with children. My goal has always been and still is to get children back into school as soon as it was safe, which it now appears to be given all the CDC guidelines. I've been a little bit upset to see that it took the governor and the education commissioner mandating a return. And now Denham is sort of scrambling to get all of this done by April. Once the children are back in school, we need to have certain plans and programs in place. And I feel that with my background, I know what those should look like and what they should include. And I have ideas and suggestions on ways that we can make this happen. I am, as I said before, very familiar with DEI in schools. And I know what it should look like in schools. And I am eager to be part of the committee that is working on that. I've been a town meeting member and I'm familiar with the budget process. I have also worked in areas of schools where I feel that I could show how academic excellence could be achieved. I've worked in low performing schools and high achieving schools. And I feel like we could push harder for that. I have been a teacher on a teachers' union and I have been on hiring committees, which are also goals for school committee. Thank you. I've been told I'm done.
Thank you, Kathleen. Victor.
Thank you, Dan. First off, I'd like to again thank the Denham Junior Women's Club and Women in Democracy Denham for the opportunity tonight. It's been pretty wonderful. I'm running to, because I want to continue to serve our kids, schools, and community as a member of the school committee. I believe in all the work that we've been able to do in the face of this ongoing crisis, from continuing the mission of building a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive education system by bringing in Dr. O, while at the same time, working really hard to keep our kids, staff, and kids, staff, and teachers safe within the schools in whatever limited capacity we were ever able to bring them back this year. I am also very proud of like, of being able to craft a budget that supports the needs of the short term, which are great, while acknowledging and planning for the needs of the future, which are even bigger as it stands now. And finally, I'm running because representation matters. I truly believe that our town government should reflect the look and feel of our populace in general. And that representation could be extremely important to getting new people involved in the schools and in the town government. So with that, I ask that you allow me to continue to serve our kids, schools, and community by giving me one of your three votes in April, on April tenth, so that we together can continue to grow Denham School towards excellence and a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Palito.
I'm running for the Denham, I'm running for the Denham School Committee because I want to, I want to make a difference in the town and have impact on its future. My background and experience will enable me to make a significant contribution to the school committee because I have a solid understanding of municipal finance. The school committee serves the important task of overseeing the budget and the spending of the Denham Public Schools. If elected, I'll use my expertise in accounting and municipal finance to create and implement policies rooted in responsible spending with the goal of minimizing future budgetary increases while meeting the needs of our exceptional public schools. I committed to a safe reopening of the schools as soon as possible. As a member of the school committee, I work collaboratively with our talented teachers, dedicated administration, and resilient community to implement policies and procedures that address the challenges that have resulted from our new normal, including making sure all Denham schools are equipped to safely handle in-person learning, adopting long-term plans to ease the burden of future disruptions, and prioritizing access to counseling and mental health services for our students. I work with my fellow committee members, my, I work with my fellow committee members, the superintendent, the Denham Public Schools Administration, to set goals aimed at increasing transparency and community involvement with decision-making, periodically assessing student performances, determining what steps can be taken to increase enrollment of Denham residents in the Denham Public Schools. In closing, I'd like to thank the Denham Junior Women's Club, the Women in Democracy in Denham, and for Mr. Moderator for hosting this forum tonight. I'd like to also thank all the other candidates for joining us here today. I'm looking forward to seeing many of you in the next few weeks on the campaign trail. I think there are a couple more events coming up. I would also like to thank my family and friends for the unwavering support that they've shown me the last few weeks. I humbly ask for one of your three votes on Saturday, April tenth.
Thank you, Chris. Lisa, Lisa LaPrada.
Great. Thanks, Dan. So I would like to start off by saying that this is not an easy job. It's a, it's a large time commitment to do. There's a reason why this is the only elected board in town that requires you to do an eight-hour training mandated by the state within the first year of being elected to the board. In a time when we have three seats up for reelection, I feel it's really important to have continuity on the board, which is why I would like to continue to volunteer and work for the town of Denham. I think the experience that I've had has been shown in the things we've been able to accomplish in the last five years. We just finished our 2020 Vision Plan and the school committee will be working with the administration on the plan for the next five years going forward. In the past five years, we've been able to improve educator resources. We've implemented organizational structures that have really helped move along and offer new tools and ways of teaching for our students. Technology with our one-to-one program, Denham was set up to go into the pandemic with having curriculum coordinators, instructional coaches, and also the one-to-one program, we were ready. So for the next five years, we need to continue to support the systems that are in place. We need to have a large emphasis and focus on student growth and performance as we go forward. We need to think about the facilities master plan in the elementary schools and the capital improvements at Denham High School to avoid costly repairs like the hundred thousand dollar boiler replacement we just had to do at Green Lodge. So I think it's really important with my experience going through the ECEC project before to be a part of this new MSBA project, we've just been entered into, been asked into the be considered for eligibility with thirty other projects. And I would like to continue to use my skill sets on the negotiation and other committees to continue to work for you, Denham. And so I kindly ask for one of your three votes on April tenth. Thanks.
Thank you. Kylan McCormick.
So I want to thank Wind and the Denham Junior Women's Club for hosting tonight's event and share my appreciation for everyone who's here and as well as the other candidates. This election is crucial and it's crucial for a number of reasons, but one is undoubtedly at the forefront of all of our minds is that it's the fact that we're still in the midst of a pandemic. Our children has, our children have been out of school, at least partially for a full year. I think it was a full year last week, maybe. We're starting to see that light at the end of the tunnel, but the effects of our, on our students will without a doubt be pervasive and long lasting. I see this already in the school in which I work and with my own children and with my friends' children. The outcomes of this election will have a direct impact on our students, families, educators, and our communities as a whole. We need people in these schools committee seats who can hit the ground running, who know all of the variables that go into making schools thriving aspects of our community. We need people who will support goals, policies, and budgets that will directly benefit our students and allow them to thrive in our post-pandemic world. I'm uniquely qualified to fill this role. I'm a well-rounded educator with years of experience as a teacher, a district administrator, and currently a school-based administrator. I have master's degrees in education, in special education, and an undergraduate degree in early childhood education. Is being an educator a prerequisite to serving on the school committee? No, of course not. Having a well-rounded board is very important. But right now, this is what our town needs. We have no time to waste in ensuring that our students get what they need, that collaboration, parent and educator voice are at the forefront of discussions, policy, and budgetary decisions. On April tenth, I urge you to exercise your right to vote. Vote for my kids, vote for your kids, and vote for our beautiful community of Denham. Tell your friends to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylan. Dawn Severs.
Thank you so much to the Women in Democracy Denham and to the Denham Junior Women's Club for hosting tonight's forum. Thank you very much to everyone who registered for the event tonight and spent this evening getting to know us better. Most importantly, I want to thank all of the other candidates that are running for school committee this election season. Those of you here tonight and those who could not be here. As I've said before, I will say again, there's no such thing as having too many candidates. Denham is lucky to have this problem. What an honor and a privilege it's been for me to run alongside seven other highly qualified people. And even with the political and social climate out there, with the threat of being harassed and ridiculed hanging over each one of us, for our own personal reasons, we still decided to step up and try to make a difference. I'm so proud and honestly, a bit exhilarated to be a part of it. My first time running for a townwide office, and I've really had to step up my game because each and every one of you have set the bar higher and higher every day. I'm a better person for having participated in this race, no matter the outcome. I'm so proud of our town and I'm immeasurably proud to call myself a Denomite. There are so many great folks who want to do good. And while we might disagree on how we get there, so many have stepped up to try to do the difficult work and it's a wonderful thing to see. I hope that I've given you some insight as to why I would be uniquely qualified to be on the school committee. As someone who went through the Denham School System myself, as someone who currently is a parent of a Denham High School student, and someone who's tackling many of the same issues at my job that the school committee is tackling now, including setting policy, working with budgets, and hiring and firing of personnel. I not only meet, but I exceed the criteria for a school committee member. So thank you for your time and I do humbly ask for one of your three votes on Saturday, April tenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Mike Emery, you get the honor of closing things out for us this evening.
Thank you. And let me echo all the thanks that went around to all the people here and particularly the people that took their evening to sign on and listen to us and to pick up on what Dawn said. I mean, this is one of the things I love about Denham. You know, here we are, all these people engaged, all the, and, and good conversations that we've had. And I've appreciated the conversations I've had with many of you throughout this and just trying to, everybody's here to do better for Denham. And, you know, schools are the one thing that we've always agreed are a joint responsibility, that we are all invested in the success of our schools, because the future we get is the future that our schools produce. If we want our, our students today to be thriving economically in the future, they need the skills to do that. If they want them thriving as citizens and solving problems maybe better than we are, then all the things we talked about, being able to differentiate facts and put, synthesize things together, all that kind of good teaching. And that's why I'm here and I know that's why you're here as well. The reason I chose to run is I just, the problems we're facing now, I, my particular skills and experiences are a good fit. And it's about the variety of skills and experiences. So I was trained as a school psychologist. I got a Master's of Education in Counseling and worked in New Hampshire and interned there as well. So I'd be very, hit the ground running, working with Dr. Dubay and the counseling services and some of those challenges. I spent twenty years at corporate world and I described some of it earlier and had a chance to do a lot of work around the world. And it was only thirty seconds. And anyway, so, and getting an MBA along the way, so understanding budgets. I've managed budgets of the scope and scale that we're talking about here. As a parent, I've run, had two kids and I've dealt with every age, every stage, from that first pre-K drop-off through middle school. As a parent, I've run, had two kids and I've, I've dealt with every age, every stage from that first pre-K drop off through middle school and through high school. I also grappled with the choice of sending one, keeping one kid in Dedham High and sending somebody somewhere else. And that leaves me in a position now that I feel I have the perspective and the distance and you, if I should have get one of your votes, which I'm asking for, you're going to see me in all the schools. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And my thanks to all of the candidates. I think Dedham is blessed with some wonderful choices for the school committee. Like to thank the Dedham Junior Women's Club and Women in Democracy Dedham for inviting me back. Now Molly's going to close things up for us.
Thank you, everybody. And in particular, thank you to the candidates for, for your patience and your flexibility as we had to pivot with that timing strategy. Best laid technology plans and sometimes they just don't work out. But for those of you who don't know me, my name is Molly Eppenkamp. I'm a member of the Women in Democracy Dedham Leadership Team. And on behalf of Women in Democracy Dedham and the Dedham Junior Women's Club, I'd like to thank all of you for being with us this evening and engaging in such a proactive way with the democratic process in our town. We'd especially like to thank Dan Driscoll for moderating this evening's discussion. Each of the candidates for participating and Dedham TV for broadcasting this event. Both Wind and the Dedham Junior Women's Club believe that our town is better when more people are involved and engaged. And we are so grateful that so many people have taken the big step of dedicating their time and energy to running to serve the town. And that all of you have spent this evening with us, learning about the candidates and informing your vote. Wind and the Dedham Junior Women's Club will be hosting a second forum next Monday, March twenty ninth with candidates for Parks and Recreation Commission, the Board of Library Trustees and the Board of Health, once again moderated by the esteemed Dan Driscoll. If you'd like to learn more about the candidates who participated this evening, as well as those for other townwide offices and town meeting, we do invite you to visit the Women in Democracy Dedham website, www.wind.org, where we are hosting candidate statements. Candidates for any office who have not yet submitted a statement may still do so. Thanks again, and we look forward to seeing you at the polls on Saturday, April tenth.